Six o'clock, I call the meeting to order. Everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Up tonight is the appointment of an open space committee member. Is Kiara in the room? Hi Kiara, you want to take a hot seat? Lucky you. We've received your resume. It's very impressive. And would you like to make a statement as to why you'd like? A quick one? Or you'd like to join?
Yeah. So I've been pursuing my professional and in my personal life, a passion for environmental conservation. And I also feel that serving my community is important to me, that connection to my community. So I just moved to Upton in March, and I hope to volunteer my time and serve my community in an area of that I feel I have some strength and expertise in. So it really seems like.
Your resume was very impressive. Yes. And I do think you will be a very good fit. Brett, Maureen, do you have any comments?
Just thank you for stepping up.
Welcome to the party. I'm a fellow Merrimack alum as well. I graduated a few years before you did, like 21 years before you did this. Glad to see that. Always, always nice to make the connection. So welcome to town, welcome to Upton, and thanks for volunteering and helping out.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Do I hear a motion?
I move that the select board vote appoint Kiara Huntress to the open space committee for the remaster of the one year term to June 30th, 2025.
I second the motion.
All in favor? Aye. Unanimous. Congratulations. It's official. Yeah. Stop into the town clerk's office and she'll square you in.
Okay, on the way out or?
She's not here tonight. She might still be here. If Denise is still here, she's, if you go down the stairs, she's on the left on the way out, the front door. The right, I'm in on the left, right? Yeah, I'm challenged. Okay, thank you. Next, confirmation of Capitol Budget Committee reappointment, Dan Lazar. Dan has, is on the West Coast, and he has sent an email stating his willingness to stay on the committee. And unfortunately, he's not able to be here. I think we're all familiar with Dan.
Yes.
So I'm looking to see if I need a motion.
I move that the board vote to reappoint Dan Lazar to the Capitol Budget Committee for a three-year term retroactively to July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Congratulations, Dan. You get to keep your appointment. We are going to skip the town manager report tonight. Joe unfortunately is under the weather. He's at home with the flu but is attending virtually. So we're not going to make him do that. So next is public import. Is there anybody from the public that would like to make a comment? I don't see any.
A cute little comment.
I know. Someone's unhappy. That's okay. That's a Brian, we all have them. Don't worry about it. So next is the tax classification hearing. So this hearing was posted in the Metro West Milford Daily News. Yes, thank you. Okay, I will do that. Joint hearing with the Board of Health is at 6:30. Mr. Westgate, can I call on you? Okay, follow up on the street sign request, the three-way stop sign at South in Chestnut.
Good evening.
Good evening. And we appreciate you being here.
I sent the boards some valuable information from our manual of traffic control devices, regulates what we can and cannot do with our stop signs, yield signs, and speed limit signs. And I want to point out the fact that all of the signings that we put up is regulated by the manual traffic control devices and requires that we go through a process to justify the actions that we take on our roads. And we did go through a process in 2019. We had a traffic study done by CME associates, and they found that the intersection at Chestnut and South did not meet the criteria for having an all-stop control situation where you have three intersections with stops. Because of that, I have to caution the board about additional stop signs where it could present a liability to the town. I think that the biggest problem with that intersection, and I do agree there are some concerns, was the line of sight. And we sent our roadside mower down there a little week ago, and we cut back beyond the stone wall, which we never do. And I think we solved the problems. As far as speeding goes, I remind the board that stop signs and yield signs are not traffic calming devices, and they're not intended to mitigate speed. They are collision devices. So and I think that we have taken care of that situation with the cutback. And hopefully, the residents will see the difference. And now that we have the piece of equipment and we own it, we can maintain it.
Okay. Brian, I see you're on virtually. Do you have any comments?
Yes, good evening. Thank you. Yes, I'm aware that DPW was down, and I do very much appreciate the work, the effort that they put into clearing out the area around that intersection. I think that from what I have observed going through that intersection after the work was done, it appears that most of the work, if I understand my bylaws correctly, is kind of out of the scope of the zoning that they're allowed to cut into. So when we're going south on South Street through that intersection, on the right-hand side is the vast majority of the inability to see through that intersection. That is beyond, what is the variance, eight feet going into that intersection on the right-hand side? The vegetation grows up. I called this summer three or four times to request that intersection be mowed. I was one of the folks who was at the town meeting that approved the mower that the DPW got because, and I was very excited for it, because in past years, when we contracted out, it took a very long time to get that mowed so that we could see through that intersection. To be frank, I was quite disappointed to see that again this summer it lacked maintenance through most of the summer, that we could not see through it, and that it took multiple calls to the DPW to get that mowed. So while I understand what, I'm sorry, what the gentleman is saying about having cleared out that intersection, I'm still a little concerned about the ability to see through it, given how far in they would have to cut to maintain that overgrowth on the right side headed south.
Do the chair?
Absolutely.
Good evening, Brian. So I'd like to address a couple of your comments, if I can. One is, the law says that the Department of Public Works can maintain line of sight even if it's outside of the right of way. So if there is overgrowth from private property that is hindering line of sight, the Public Works Department has the authority to cut it back. That's my first comment about the cutback. And you are correct. Some of the vines that we took off, some of the trees were beyond the right of way. It's not necessarily eight feet. It's a varying width depending on how the road meanders through the right of way. The second part is the machine itself. Thank you, by the way, for pumping us with the machine. This was our first year with it, and we trained two staff members to operate it. So our first year of training was a rotation week to week for these two individuals who spent a certain amount of time with the company coming out and showing them how to use the machine safely, and then they're becoming acclimated with both the, how the equipment works as well as the roadway itself. They travel the roads every single day, the 70-plus miles of road in town, but they don't look at every nook and cranny off of the road. They're not familiar with exactly where all the stone walls are, granite markers, or anything stumps that could be sticking up. So the first year was a slow year. It will improve.
And I understand that if we were to add a stop sign, the town would be liable if there was an accident there.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on this matter from anyone? Okay, hearing none. Any action? Any discussion?
We see how it goes. I don't want to deny it right off, but seeing how Dennis has been out there already, and it seems to be working right now, right?
I think the intersection is vastly improved.
Yeah.
It just needs to be maintained that way.
Brian, would you agree the line of sights have improved as someone who lives right there?
Generally, I would say yes. However, it's hard to tell you truthfully right now without all the leaves on all the vegetation.
Right. But as it stands right now today, and I understand the leaves are down, it's improved? And we can stay on top, and we can stay on top of this? I mean, it's going to stay like this for a few months. But I assume, if I recall your complaint correctly, there also was some snow that would hinder line of sight if it piled up. Am I correct?
If it piled up, I could see that, yes, because there is a stone wall immediately on the right-hand side of that intersection when headed south through South Street.
Okay, well, I, I think I'm happy.
While clearing it up too, give you more room to.
Exactly. Getting the vegetation back means the snow has further. I'm actually hoping not to get any. Sorry, Dennis. Brett, do you have any comments?
I don't have any comments other than, you know, I think it's, it's worth sharing. And I think Dennis's memo with the public so they can see the rationale around the study, around the rationale for the liability, right? The board's certainly not in a position to expose the town to liability by overruling what sort of regulations are and sort of standard best practices are, right? Like, I'm certainly not a roadway expert or a sign expert. I don't look at the data. I don't know the data. I don't understand the data. So I wouldn't be in a position to, to, to do anything other than support and, and make public the information and the expertise that we have within, within the town administration. So as long as we can share that information with Mr. Rowe, I think we're in good shape.
Is the town, is the town only liable for a collision if we put in a stop sign because it goes against what the study found? Or would the town be liable if the study did say that a stop sign would be warranted there? And we put a stop sign and there was an intersection accident?
Yeah. I was gonna say, I would say none of us are attorneys, so we should be mindful of that. But with that, I think, go ahead, Dennis, I'll let you.
If I understand the question, if, if the, the study met the criteria, if the, the study demonstrated, the traffic engineers concurd that it met the criteria governed by the manual uniform traffic devices, it would be who was to follow that and put the stop signs in. And if we didn't take action and there was an accident and that was investigated, those actions would hold us liable. The same is said for the other way around. In this case, it doesn't meet the criteria. Therefore, if we put stop signs there and there's an accident, we could be held responsible.
Because, right. Does that make sense, Brian?
It does. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. If anyone would like to see the memo explaining that, reach out to our executive assistant, Sue, and she will forward it to you. Okay? Just call the town manager's office.
Thank you very much.
All right. Does anyone have any other further comments? Hearing none. It's 6:14. So if.
Yeah, it's down, it'll be 6:30.
Exactly. Now you go into the hot seat, Dennis. We'll put you on hold for a minute. Okay. So. We have about 30 seconds. I said, you know, I wish these computers had like second hands on them. Oh, according to my watch, we have 15 more seconds and it will be quarter past. See? My watch now says it's 6:15. So we, the hearing was posted in the Metro West Milford Daily News. And I'll read the town classification. Town of Upton Tax Classification Hearing, legal notice. The Upton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on FY 2025 Property Tax Classification with the Upton Board of Assessors on November 19, 2024 at 6:15 PM. This public hearing provides an opportunity for taxpayers to express their views and ask questions about whether the town should adopt different rates for the various classes of property. Taxpayers are welcome to participate and present their views either orally or in writing. Written requests must be received by the assessor's office no later than November 18, 2024 by 4:00 PM. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should call or sign into the remote meeting. Upton has four classes of property: residential, commercial, industrial, and personal. Currently, there is one tax rate for all classes. The assessors are planning to recommend maintaining a single rate for all four classes of property. If you have any questions, please contact the assessor's office at 508-529-1002. And the Upton, Town of Upton Tax Classification Hearing notice was emailed on 11/12/2024. So I officially open the meeting. I recognize Valerie Leonardo from the Board of Assessors, and you may present.
Hi, good evening. Just sorry.
No.
Just taking, is there a motion?
I don't know. I didn't see one in the package. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I mean, I. I don't think there's a motion for the opening of the hearing, but there is a motion.
Okay.
There's a motion.
Do I hear a motion to open?
Okay, do I hear a motion to open the tax classification hearing?
I move that we open the tax classification hearing for fiscal 2025.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
There we go. You're welcome.
Hi, Amy.
Hi.
This is our fiscal year 2025 interim tax year. And our value assessment date is as of January 1st, 2024 for fiscal year 2025. All values are analyzed by reviewing residential values, all from real estate sales from calendar year 2024. All commercial and industrial values are industry sources and use of written returns for information for real property from calendar year 2023. And that's with our property income and expense forms. Personal property values are from cost tables and use written returns with information on business assets from calendar year 2023. This is our first year that we have enough sales all in one calendar year that were acceptable by the Department of Government. So that was a really good thing for Upton. This is the floor we had to use prior year, and this 2023 was a good calendar year.
Sure.
It's a good thing.
It is good.
So the next page three is our townwide value change. And it shows the difference between fiscal year 2024 and fiscal year 2025. I'd like to note that this year we have increased the total residential value 5.51%. That's based on all the sales that we review. Our commercial properties increased 5.86% from last year. Industrial increased 6.7%, and personal property increased 1.41%. We did have an increase in exempt parcels. That number is slightly skewed because when a new condominium complex comes on, we don't value all of those units. As the units itself, because they're not built yet. And the land itself is taken into account for, and the whole value, the whole complex on their factor that they need. So some of them can't have that code for residential yet. They have to have an exempt code because they're not full tax yet. There's nothing on the ground. There's just the ground. And that land value is taken into account, into the whole complex land value. And some of those units that are, for example, publics create, they're at their full value because they're new construction. So the new condo complexes, specifically the new units, absorb the majority of that when they're being built. But the complex is gone really quick, so I anticipate that it will be done in the next 18 months. And that's fast for a 61-unit condo complex. So that is going to change next year. But it says we increased 2.47% in value, which is somewhat true because some of the commerce creep is in there. But it's more like 2%. So, but I have to include it with the Department of Revenue. So I want to state what the actual number is. Overall, our overall value between last year and this year is 5.42%. And that's actually in line with what we were last year. So last year, it was just about 10%. And this year is about 5%. So that consistency is really good. And that shows on our next page of taxable value summary. And I would bond that by, actually, situation. Yeah, I went back a little further because I wanted to show between certification years. Our last certification with the Department of Revenue was in fiscal year 2022. Our next one is now to fiscal year 2027. So I wanted to show the difference between before certification and after certification. So I started here for fiscal year 2023, and we had to take what we got from what we had. Well, that increased 27.98%. We worked hard for next year to make sure that that wasn't going to happen again and that we were more level and in line with other communities around us and more accurate depiction of what's going on in Upton. So then the next year, we only increased 5.17%. This year, we're in line with that, and it's 5.73% greater than the year before. So it shows consistent increase in value that matches our sales analysis. And that's very important with it. So that's the whole part of this presentation. I do have, it's quite a bit of information. But if you did want, I think, one for each member, the detailed comparison report from the Division of Local Services with the Bureau of Local Assessment, AKA the Department of Revenue, that shows each individual property class and the percentages, and that matches our tax classification here. And it's a lot of info, but I like to dig through information. So it's got a lot of detail. So if you would like the detail, I would give it certainly in fashion. But I didn't want to include it in, in, in convolute our tax specification here with all different kinds of numbers. Well, I do have a bottom line. So we are recommending a single tax rate. We have 1.7% commercial, industrial, and personal property of all of our 3,345 parcels. We, the majority of our parcels are residential. So it's 99%, I think 98% change percent residential. And our commercial base is going up, and a rate is going up, the values rather are going up at a good rate, which is what it's supposed to do. What it's supposed to do that.
Okay. Do you have comments, Brett?
I would love the details.
Me too.
Excellent.
You got three nerds over here who love details, Val. Do you have any other comments on details?
Not on the classification hearing, but I do have a question for Valerie after we vote on classification.
Okay. Are there any members of the public that have any comments to make regarding the tax classification?
Online is.
Oh, yes. If you'd like this, yes.
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 It is, in case anyone didn't hear, yes, though, the, the details will be online. So we can all delve into them.
Okay.
If you'd like to hand them to us?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. So do I hear, having, having no more comments, do I hear a vote to close the public hearing?
I make them.
Want to do it?
I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I hear a motion regarding the tax classification?
I move the board vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, to establish a single tax rate for all types of property in fiscal year 2025.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Val. Have a great, oh, no, oh, you gotta wait.
Have you ever been involved in the, the law that allows you to collect taxes of time of occupancy?
No.
No?
We do, if we, Upton does do supplemental tax bills, that'll go, so yes, in essence, we don't give it to you that very moment, but we do supplemental tax bill for when the date of occupancy going to June 30th. The first year I started, we didn't have a comprehensive list. The second year, we collected $101,000. The, this year, we collected $100,000 in supplemental tax.
So you are doing the supplemental billing?
Yes, we do. It's part of the law. You can't skip it. You have to do it. But you have to do it through the process. So let's say you plot something today, and you moved in, you moved in, you do the initial tomorrow. I can't go on the third day and say, you have this bill. I have to go through the process, and it's a 30, you have 30 days to pay the bill. And it's per, per day, it's the tax rate per day of the value. So, and there is one worksheet.
It has to be 50% complete?
Yes, yes, yes. 51%. 51% complete, yes, as of July 1st.
Yep.
Yes. Yes, we do do that. And I do have this spreadsheet on it.
Oh, I'll take them too.
I have both, yes. So I have both years, at fiscal year 24 and fiscal year 23.
Oh, nice.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So great.
Okay, thank you, Val.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. So we have three minutes until the Board of Health meeting. That's not a public hearing, so we can move forwards?
Yeah.
Okay. So for those of you who don't know, my other position in town is I'm on the Board of Health. So I can do both from this seat. So I will call the Board of Health hearing. I will open it at 6:27. We are now in a joint meeting. I don't know. Quinn, Quinn Parks is the other member, and I don't know if he's here just yet. I know he was traveling.
Yeah, you can't.
Without a quorum. Okay, well then, we'll hold off on the Board of Health until Quinn appears. So because we don't have a quorum. That's okay. So Dennis, would you like to fill us in on the private road snow plowing?
Or even, sure.
That any of our work is actually scintillating. It's, it's entertaining, especially because we're so much fun.
The worst one, the community doesn't have many non-accepted town roads that we maintain. But we do have a handful. And every single year, we go through this exercise where the board grants the DPW permission to utilize town forces for snow and ice operations. So you have the list in front of you. It's the very same list for the last seven years I've been here. And everything is good to go if you would just approve it.
Do I hear a motion?
I move the board vote to approve the snow plowing of private ways as presented.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Right. Quinn's still not here. So the ARPA. Let's just keep going with you, Dennis, because Quinn's not here, so we can't move forward without a quorum.
Quinn is logging in right now.
Is he? Okay, thanks for all. So we'll wait for Quinn to log in, and then we'll get this done. And we won't hold up everyone else. It can be tricky for those of you who haven't logged on to Teams through the town. It's not always an easy process.
Nothing's easy, is it?
But sometimes, I swear to God, Microsoft Teams just decides it doesn't like you and it won't work. That's my old gremlins. That's my technical explanation. I call it the wheel of death. It's like, it takes, and, and then the more it circles, the more. It's like, it takes, and, and then the more it circles, the more stressed you get. Like, what am I doing wrong? And then I think it's like detrimental to log off and try to start over again, because I think it's just slow. Yeah, we're not going anywhere. We're fine. So.
I mean, I would think the discussion of the community message board is something that Joe would want to talk about.
I don't think, I don't, yeah, we'll skip, well, he said we could discuss it, but we can just, we can just do it briefly till next time. You know? Okay, Quinn, I can see you've logged in. If you're muted, though, can you unmute?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you for attending. I tried to open the meeting, but since you weren't here, we didn't have a quorum. Um, I'll be wearing both hats tonight, Quinn, both as select board chair and Board of Health member. So I, if, since you are officially the Board of Health Chair, would you like to call the Board of Health meeting to order?
I would. Uh, as, as meeting chairman, I called the meeting of November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four to order.
Okay, thank you. So this is a joint meeting. Um, unfortunately, one of our members unexpectedly passed away, and this is to fill his open spot until the election in May. And we have three candidates. And if I could find where I am. Yeah, what page are we on? Ah, I'm, I'm getting closer here, hold on. This is what happens when you scroll through fifty-one pages, my apologies. So if I'm not mistaken, Dr. Gavin Jones, you applied, if you'd like to move to the hot seat. And, um, if you would just like to give us a statement as to why you'd like to be on the Board of Health?
Certainly mosquito control board, when I initiated here, I knew I wanted to engage in some form of kind of civic engagement. This opening is apparent, everybody feeling probably aligned with my interests and probably my talent, my skill set, and knowledge the most. Any way that I can be of service and kind of use my medical background to help this as the community. It's, it's most interesting. Um, and whatever capacity that takes, however, it can be of use. And I think. I had a really enjoyable time serving with the MC, and I will continue to do that. Um, and I've been really kind of pleasantly surprised at the beginning. Sawed everybody and kind of handed me here within Upton, and I wanted to be engaged in it. So, like I said, I saw that this position was open. I wanted to. I'm currently a cancer physician and working with us. Been there for, for years. So, that's kind of.
Okay, that's fine. We usually have, as Board of Health, we usually have meetings once a month unless something urgent comes up. Is that, and you can find the time? Okay, beautiful. I, I read your resume. You're very impressive. I was like, this man does not sleep, and I mean that in a good way.
We've got time to do it.
You become accustomed to physical speed. If my life was not as busy as was my injury, that's where I'd work from five thirty to.
Well.
Fourteen, fourteen. Anything in life compared to that is a.
Okay, perfect. Quinn, do you have any questions for Dr. Jones?
Muted. Um, no, uh, no, I don't. It's, he's a compelling candidate, to be sure.
Okay. Maureen, any questions?
No, it's just a very, very impressive.
Oh, thank you.
Brett?
Questions here? Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Okay.
Appreciate the interest.
I think next on our list, as I scroll furiously, would be Pharrell, Pharrell Jolly. Pharrell, would you like to make an opening comment or let us know why you'd like to be on the board? You're, you're muted.
You're talking to me? Sorry, if you're talking to me, I'm sorry, the team's timed out right when, I think, maybe you said my name, if you said my name.
Of course, of course, yes, I called you Pharrell, of course. That's, that's the joy of Microsoft Teams. The minute your name is up, everything goes down. Um, would you like to make an opening statement?
Sure, I'll, I'll make a brief statement, and I apologize for not being there today. We, we've had, we've had the flu come through the house, so I thought I would keep our germs to ourselves this evening. But, um, no, my name is Pharrell Jolly. Um, I've been Upton resident since twenty seventeen. Um, love Upton and love the community that we found here. And I'm also a nurse practitioner by training since twenty eleven. I've been a nurse and, um, you know, don't have the, uh, the impressive oncology background that Dr. Gavin does, but, um, you know, certainly have been in healthcare. Um, I've also, I'm also certified in patient safety and have done environmental health and safety, um, in the past. So I'm interested in the Board of Health. Um, full disclosure, um, you know, my, my husband is Quinn Parks, so he is already on the board. And, um, you know, I understand what the obligations of the board are from the years of, of seeing his obligations to the board, and I, I really am looking for an opportunity to serve the community that we live in and, and connect, um, connect more in that way. So that's why I put myself forward. Um, it, you know, it sounds like there's some, some great candidates here tonight, so.
Thank you, yes, I think they are, and, and I appreciate it. And if I'm not mistaken, you actually ran against Ted, um, the last time, two years ago, and did very well. Okay, Maureen, any questions?
No.
Brett?
No questions. Thank you so much for your interest.
Okay, and we have one more candidate, and I do believe I saw her online earlier, Sabrina Rubello. I don't see her on. I did earlier, but I don't know, so. Okay, we have her information, so. Do we want to vote? On who? How do we want to handle this?
Um, Laura, i- if I could for a moment?
Yes.
Guided by, uh, by state ethics, whom I reached out to, that I am not permitted to be present for voting.
Okay.
Uh, when that comes down, I will, I will step aside and, uh, and advocate to you for, for this evening to, to speak on behalf of the Upton Board of Health.
Okay, I appreciate it, Quinn. Sue, point of order. Does, what happens to the quorum? I mean, is that, it's just a vote?
It's just.
Okay.
At this point, you, you don't, you will get one, each member gets one vote.
Okay.
Three.
Okay. All right.
It's the standing committee members that are present, and he has to.
Okay. Yes. Okay, all right, um.
So if somebody wants to make a motion, that's where you start.
Okay, um, so if we're going to, now we're going to vote, I'll let Quinn step off.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening, all.
Thanks, Quinn.
And, and I, I would like to personally thank the candidates all for stepping forward. Um, it's very heartening to see this level of interest in our community. Um, it, it's, it's, it's a great, it's a great place to live and a great place to serve. Thank you.
And, thanks, Quinn. And if I could add, this is an appointment until the election in May. So everyone can pull papers, I think, the beginning of March, roughly?
Yes.
So, there's that, okay. Um, so I.
Y'all think?
I don't know.
It's all.
It's a heavy.
We don't find ourselves in this situation too often where we have so many great and strong candidates, both sort of, right? Like, I look at Pharrell as someone who's been active and engaged in the community for quite some time, clearly has a long-term interest in serving on the Board of Health, has appropriate and relevant experience, um, ran for the seat previously, which I think are all good things and good indications. And obviously, Dr. Jones and even Sabrina, whom isn't here, but has a master's in public health. Um, it, it, you know, having three great interested candidates, I think, is promising for the future, not just for this particular appointment, but even as we get more and more volunteers in town. Uh, so whoever isn't selected to serve in this role, I would hope and encourage all of you to, to pursue other areas of volunteerism in the town. There's, there's lots of places and capacity and needs that we have, so it's great, it's just great to see.
It, it truly is, and Pharrell, Dr. Jones, and Sabrina, if you're listening, it, this is so exciting to see young people who have come into town and want to donate their time and get involved. I mean, this is what we're all hoping for. Um, Maureen?
And it's all we need to make, uh, all three can pull papers if they'd like.
Exactly. That would be exciting. Doesn't usually happen. I, I was, full disclosure, my term was up last time. I ran against myself. It was something, I guess it was mine to lose. Um, so, okay, Brett, do you have an opinion? Do you have a candidate?
Um, I think, uh, yeah, I mean, I'm. I don't feel too strongly. I mean, I don't think we can go wrong. Do you, either of you have sort of an inclination, one way or the other?
Honestly, I'd love to put names in a hat and pull them, because they're also qualified.
I know.
Um.
It's all right.
This is the only downside, is this is very difficult for us. We have very good people. Um, Maureen, do you have a preference?
I said he's, Dr. Jones has a very impressive resume. And I know Pharrell has ran, run in one of the elections two years ago, insured interest, like you said. It's tough.
Yeah, it is. So who wants to dive in the deep end first? Brett?
Um, I will nominate Pharrell Jolly to the seat.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unit. Roll call vote?
Yeah. Maureen, do an L.I.
Simon, aye?
Laura, have I? And Pharrell, congratulations, you're on the Board of Health. Dr. Jones, I urge you to take out papers. I do believe it's March. Um, it's, it's eye-opening as somebody.
Run against Laura, what, three years?
Eight years, two years, one of.
Two years?
No, this is, she just ran last year.
She just ran, oh.
Two years.
But no, it's, it, it is, the Board of Health is interesting. It's not just help. We do sewer, we do water, we do trash, we do food. It's, it's really eye-opening, and it's, it is interesting. It will definitely broaden your horizons, both of you.
You're involved in building houses.
Yes, the building department and everything else, so it gets, it gets interesting. But thank you so much for being here and for applying. We truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
And like I said, this was, go ahead, Pharrell.
I was just, I was gonna, you know, thank you for your, for the opportunity and, and for the trust in, in me filling this for the short term, and I, I think echo exactly what you said to Dr. Jones. I, this is, it's exciting to have, um, to have people wanting to, to join and, and help the community because it's such a worthy community. Um, so, um, hopefully we will, we will all see each other.
Yeah, thank you. I think this is the first time in a long time we've had multiple people interested in the Board of Health, and it's, as a member, it, it, it bodes well for the future, it truly does. And we appreciate everyone coming and, um, and being here. And Pharrell, you're sharing, Joe is remote as well because of the flu, so hopefully none of us get it.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, have a great night. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So I will end the Board of Health meeting at six forty-five P.M.
You gotta wait.
That's on your.
Yeah, I don't know that anybody was taking a, but. I will. Okay, um, next, Dennis, you're back up again. The American Rescue Plan Act, the reallocation of funds.
I'm a hundred percent sure. Well, my boss would like to discuss this evening.
Oh, he's on.
He's on. Joe, would you like to jump in for a minute? He has a hard time talking. Oh, so I'm just putting you really on the hot, can you do that, Joe, without choking to death or dying, please?
Um, I can't promise each, um, but I'm here for, uh, for any questions or support. Uh, per my email, I mentioned about, this is a work in progress with sort of developing this plan, so, um, Dennis has some updated information, and then we'll vote, we can vote on formal, uh, reallocation on the third.
Which one do we do?
That works.
So we, we built as a work, in the last week and a half, to take a look at all of the votes that the board has done to authorize the expenses of our funds. And we have a very detailed list of all of those authorizations, as well as a very detailed list of all of the expenses to date. And it is a moving object where there are some authorizations that are still in effect. So, for instance, um, the water main project on Fisk, although the project is done, we're coming up on a year past that, we will be closing out the retainage. So there is still another check to go to CJP, uh, ARPA, that we'll be cutting next week. In addition, or the week after. In addition to that, we have the authorization that the board did for the engineering, and has built work for the sewer interceptor at Grapton Upton Railroad. That is still ongoing. There is a balance in there of roughly twenty-two thousand dollars as they're doing the construction as we speak, and that is to allow our engineers, right, Pierce, to coordinate their efforts of the contractor, to oversee the efforts of the contractor, to ensure the town's best interest is kept during the whole construction process, provide shop drawings and to provide as-bills at the end, including to redo a deed for the easement, because the easement is molding. So that twenty thousand dollars will go to that. There is a balance of about. Last of all. CJP has a balance of roughly two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and we're going to be paying the retainage out of that. So there will still be money left over in that account. I commend to the board, through the town manager, that the appropriation that was authorized at the last town meeting for the voting be taken from that excess.
Because if I'm correct, if we don't earmark this or specifically put it towards a specific project, we run the risk of losing it, if correct?
So the town manager, myself, and the finance director, Kenny Costa, had a meeting, and, sorry, my assistant, Bill Taylor, we had a meeting to reconcile all of the outstanding balances, and we had to the very end of December to expend all of the amounts. Because some of this money is earmarked for projects that won't begin in time. I'll give you an example. We earmarked five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to offset the construction costs with grocery bridge. That will not get expended before the end of December. So what Kenny has come up with is a plan for us to divert some of the projects that we're working on now that have been approved through articles. Another example is my paving. I'm doing a great deal of paving right now. We are going to utilize the paving to draw that down so that we end up with a zero balance before the end of December, and we will simply go back the next town meeting and move the money where it's supposed to be to restore it.
Okay.
And it's a short by a plan, it's going to work, we're on track. I can tell you by the numbers that Bill and I went through today, we're going to draw it right down to zero before the end of December. No problem.
Good, that's, that's what I wanted to ensure.
Yep.
So. So.
We're on track. Lot of time.
Sounds great.
So we don't?
Yes, Brett.
So do we, we're not then making a vote on the reallocation of funds as presented? We're gonna hold on that one, but make the motion for the electronic voting devices, is that?
No.
I think, vote on, vote on both of them.
I think the town manager wants to wait until the seventh meeting.
Do both of those, so, okay, so.
To be more accurate. Keep in mind, they'll still be moving even on the seventh third, because we'll still be drawing down.
Okay.
We'll be so close, you'll have a much better picture.
Got it. Okay, so we don't have to do, there's no motions right now. Okay, got it.
No.
This was an honorable day today.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Short decision that, that was done, that's the recommendation.
Maureen?
And well, it'd be my thing if we voted the amount of money, at least it would be there for when we do it on the third for the allocation.
That's true. Um, do, do I hear, do you want to vote on the ARPA funds for the electronic voting? And then that's a given?
Yeah. I would.
Or is that a given?
I would.
That's the next discussion?
To whatever the town manager recommends.
Okay. Joe, we're, we're, we're lost in the weeds here. See what happens when you're not present? We can't see your face. Okay, and we're on C? Okay, so there's no action.
I feel like it's like.
No action on C, and then we'll move on D, am I correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks, Joe.
Okay, I approve that the board vote purchase electronic voting devices using ARPA funds in the amount of $20,000, $20,480.
Second motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Do we want to discuss the community?
We must have something else.
No, Dennis is all done. Dennis, would you?
It's ready to go home.
Whatever you need.
I know you are.
He's like, ask me about.
You've had a very long day, and you have a drive to get home. If you would like to head out. You, I know, you always say it's all right. You're like, I'm fine, I'm fine. You could be in eight million pieces and you're fine. You're like me, love it. If you would like to excuse yourself from our scintillating meeting, we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Dennis.
Do we want to discuss the Community Message Board, or do we just want to push that off to the third? What's doing this?
I do. She's doing that?
Doing, I'm doing, pushing it off to the third.
Yeah, pushing it off.
Okay.
Passed over.
Passed over. Um, discussion of future meeting topics and meeting schedule. It's in our plan. Does anybody have any comments? Okay, we can just keep moving with that, that's fine. Um, the meeting minutes. Okay, that's good.
Town manager who has to sit here, he's gonna be with me at the town meeting. And the ARPA reallocation.
Okay. That's fine. Did everyone read the meeting minutes as submitted? Okay, did anyone beside me have any changes?
I just looked at the comment.
I, I had a question on line one ninety-four. I think maybe the word "and" needs to be in there. It reads manager laden, member Simus recommended the DPW. It just read better with the word "and," and that's me being. Okay, and then, um, on, when we discussed the MOA with the Board of Health, and we offered to share their agreement with the library trustees, we also, Rick Porter was in the room from recreation.
Yeah.
And I shared it with him as well, so I thought that should be noted. I made a note of that in my minutes, which I'll give to Sue. So do I hear a motion to make, to approve the minutes as amended?
I move that the board approve the minutes as amended for October twenty-ninth and November twelfth.
Second motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn the select board meeting.
Second motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's okay. Unanimous?
Unanimous.
Thank you. At six fifty-five.